Yeah. The, the, the relatives of debris cleanup. Okay, okay. Yes.
I will call the Cookeville City Council Meeting from March 5th to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woblick.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton. Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Four present, one absent. James, can I speak?
Um, so this is, um, probably the most tragic time we've had in, in Cookeville, Putnam County. I know it has been since I've lived here and I moved here in the eighties. Um, before we get started, I know a lot of people have been impacted by this, but we've had numerous city employees, their families have been impacted by this. Um, but I've had, it's been questioned today, why should we meet? Of course, we lost Jessica Clark. And Monday, the last thing she worked on was getting together for tonight's meeting. So, we're gonna meet for Jessica. Um, my heart's broken, losing her. Um, but I also wanted to recognize just the employees that have lost. Some have lost everything. I mean, this has hit us. Every department's been hit. In the general department, we've lost Jessica, but Tammy Tucker's lost her home. She's severely injured. Shane Brooks has lost his home, everything he has. The electric department, Glenn Greenwood and Karen Brown both have home damage. The fire department, Brandon Lee's lost everything. Sean Hotspiller, Mike Brown, and retiree Roger Fuquas, family members have, homes have been damaged. The police department, Officer Craig Ragsdale, lost his home. His daughter's got a broken leg, and I met with him yesterday. And he was more of an inspiration to me than I was for him. He just talked about how God had blessed him and protected his family through this. Just, Justin Long's home's been damaged, and retiree Barbara Stewart, her home's been heavily damaged. David Long, the gas department, his home was right on the edge of one of the most devastated areas I've seen out there in West Haven. His house has been damaged. In leisure services, Kim Frick Wilker, Michael Cage, Steve Loftus, Bradley West, and James Qualls, all have had damage and are out without power. In the planning department, Haley Dixon, who's just came to work for us a few minutes, a few months ago. Her parents' home was in West Haven, it's completely gone. Her dad's in Vanderbilt with, um, severe injuries. Public Works Department, Blake Hare's home was damaged, and Timmy Lee's home is destroyed. So I would ask y'all, if we could, just take a, and I know there's many, many other people that are hurt and, and, and have lost loved ones and have lost property. But I'd like for us to take just a moment of silence to remember our people, the City of Cookeville people. And that doesn't even go to talk about all our guys and gals that are out there, the working there, twelve, fourteen hour shifts. Our police, our fire, our utility guys, Greg's guys, Greg's utility, Greg's workers. It's the stuff that they're not supposed to be doing, you know, moving rubble to recover bodies. And this is hard stuff, folks. And I'd ask us to, just take a moment here, uh, of silence, just to contemplate all this.
Thank you, James, for that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I'd like to make, uh, request one change to the agenda. Uh, it would be add as seven E. Um, relative to debris cleanup and would authorize, uh, the city manager to negotiate some contracts, but I'd ask that you amend the agenda to add seven E.
There's no motion for the amended agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been second. Any discussion? I vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
On, uh, item five A, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on February twenty, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O two zero zero one zero two, closure of alley located between sixty-four East First Street and two oh four Cherry Avenue. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wheaton and council members. Um, I do want to report on second reading that both property owners that are party to the request will each acquire one half of the alley, alley that's contiguous with, to their respective properties. The ordinance will be void if the property owners don't finalize this acquisition with, uh, of the surplus property request within ninety days, and I recommend your approval on second and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Six A, the consent agenda set a date four two twenty for a public hearing on ordinance O two zero zero three zero three, rezoning of nineteen oh one, nineteen thirteen, and nineteen nineteen, North Washington Avenue. From CL Local Commercial, and four twenty, four thirty, five oh two, five twelve, and five eighteen, East Jerewitzin Road, from RS ten Single Family Residential to RM fourteen Multi-Family Residential. Is there a motion on, uh, six A?
So moved. Second.
This been second. Any discussion? I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Uh, six B, set a date four two twenty for a public hearing on ordinance O two zero zero three zero four. Amendment to the zoning code to include microbreweries and brew pubs as permitted use in the CI, uh, Commercial Industrial Mixed Use District, include brew pubs in the PCD. Did you already do the?
Nope. I've done it. You did it. You're right.
Oh, we usually do them both at the same time.
Oh, sorry.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. I'm looking to send the agenda. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under new business, seven A, consider authorizing the city manager, submit application for renewal for a Voca grant, Police Department, Chief Evans.
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this is just renewing a Voca grant that we currently have. It expires in June. This funds our witness, uh, Victims Witness Coordinator. Uh, this grant comes through the Office of Criminal Justice Programs. Uh, the grant amount, as you can see there, uh, is funding, uh, for salary and training for twenty twenty one is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, forty-five cents for twenty twenty-two. Fifty-four thousand, seven seventy-three, sixty-three. Our responsibility is a twenty percent match. Uh, we've been able to meet that match with supervisory salary and also in kind, uh, through volunteers. Uh, specifically interns from university. Uh, recommend your approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven B, consider approval of emergency repair of raw water pump number three at the water plant. Water Quality Department, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, uh, back in, uh, I think it was early eighteen, we had a seven hundred KVA transformer and VFD for one of our high service pumps at the, at the lake failed. Uh, we finally got it re-replaced and back in line in September of eighteen. Uh, when we reconnected everything and the motor, started the motor back up, it was drawing too many amps, so we shut it back down. We contacted two electrical companies to come, try to determine what the problem was with the motor. They could not determine it, so we ended up contacting John Bouchard Company out of Nashville to come up. They had worked on prior pumps and motor problems for us before. Uh, they ended up repairing the motor. And during startup of that reinstallation, figured out we had a pump issue also. All, all three, three, all three tied together. So we asked them while they were there to go ahead and pull the pump, take it back to their shop, and, and evaluate it, and make us a recommendation. Uh, after they evaluated it, we, uh, made a decision to go ahead and rebuild, have a complete rebuild. It was twelve years old and had lost, lost some of its capacity. So we finally got that installed, and it's working every, all three parts and pieces are working like they're supposed to. Uh, the final invoice is fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. That's the motors. Can't see the pumps, they're underwater. And that's parts of the impellers and so forth that's on the pumping, underwater, so. But I'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I have one question. Uh, I just want to make clear that, that that was an old repair prior to anything that happened and involves a water station. Everything is up and running.
Everything's up and running.
And has been, and we're, is an old invoice. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider awarding bid for twenty twenty waterline leak survey services. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, we opened, uh, uh, took proposals on water leak survey annually, and we received four bids. Richards LMC was the low bidder and would recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven D, receive the final Dogwood Park Master Plan for Leisure Services, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Um, you will recall that, uh, back late last summer, we, uh, you asked us to, uh, engage with, uh, HFR Design to, uh, do an update of the Dogwood Park Master Plan of two thousand and seven. And, uh, we did that. We've completed that, uh, design or that master plan process, not design, but master planning process at this point. And we're pleased to have, uh, representatives from HFR Design here with us tonight. We're also, we also have a couple of members of a, uh, Public Citizens Steering Committee here with us tonight. We appointed a steering committee to, to give us input from the citizens, and, uh, that committee included Dillcia Cowan, Jason McCormick, Michelle O'Neal, Bill Pardue, Rob Shabert, Phil Schaller, Brad Sells, Donna Simpson, Kelly Swallows, and Laura Wolf. And both Donna Simpson and Laura Wolf are here with us tonight. We appreciate their coming. Um, in the interest of time and not to belabor all of this, I'm gonna turn this over to the folks from HFR Design here with us tonight. We have Jim Gillum, Kyle Dunn, and Beth Meadows from HFR Design, and I believe Kyle Dunn is going to start, uh, talking here and presenting our plan for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, and Mayor. It's good to be here. Mr. Mills as well, uh, and other members of the council appreciate the time to present our update to the master plan. As Rick did say, we started last, uh, late last summer, and we've through the process of three or four steering committee meetings, which were well attended by the members of the committee. And then in January, we had a public presentation. I know Dr. Womack and Ms. Wheaton were here at that meeting. We appreciate that. Uh, but through that process, uh, we have created our master plan. Uh, Jim is a technician, sorry about that. Jim's a technician involved with the, with this. So Jim, why don't you follow up with some of the specifics?
Sure, thank you. And I understand, uh, you did hear this on Monday, but I know there's some people in the audience that first time they've heard it, so I'll go through, uh, somewhat, uh, give an overview there, maybe not in, in real detail. But, um, one thing that we did discuss with the steering committee early on, and, and that's the nature of the, of the park and the current conditions, and the fact that it's, it is a passive park, and that was really the desire, uh, of, of really the staff. And, and what we recommended as well, to, to keep with that nature. Uh, there were some amenities that were, were thrown out and, and suggested, and, and we do actually have one that's on here now, and it's, sorry for the jumpiness there. But the, uh, there's a fitness court on there, that that was one thing that was, was mentioned, that that's, that's obviously pushing the envelope a little bit with the passive, uh, activities there. But what we heard, uh, through the, through the meeting really was, was shade at the, shade at the playground. Uh, we're showing on the top area just some ideas as far as what, you know, around the perimeter with, with the benches there, actually adding some shade for, for parents. Uh, we, we talked about adding shade for the, the structure itself, but it's just so, uh, I guess so expansive there and being able to, to get footings in the ground to hold in, uh, the shade cells, uh, here, and that would be disruptive to the playground. Uh, the other thing we heard, you know, restroom building, and we are showing a restroom building in this area. Uh, the existing building is across the park, and that was one thing, you know, parents talked about is, is having the proximity there with the restroom building. So that was one thing we, we heard constantly. And then also connectivity from really this, the east side with the playground and the parking to the western side of the park. And I know the city had, you know, some plans in the past and looked at and actually went up to bid with a, uh, with the walking bridge, and so we're showing that connectivity. We're actually showing more of a, a culvert, uh, which could be fill material and, and then a concrete sidewalk across the top of it as an option. I mean, not, not ruling out a bridge, but that was one option that we, we felt like could be a possibility that could, could maybe keep the cost down. Um, as we go around, uh, here's kind of a little blow up picture, and I'm not sure if you've got that on your screen where you can see it a little better or not. But, uh, that's the fitness court here. Um, you've got entrances all around the park, and that's one thing we want to try to do is, is up, you know, give more of an identity for when you enter the park. And, uh, you know, of course, all around the streets, uh, west side, north, and, and I guess I'd be remiss to say that one thing that really brought this, you know, project about is the acquisition of the property on, on First Street. And, uh, so that's really where, you know, I think the opportunity came from, is, uh, is doing that. And so what we're looking at there is an event center with a nice gazebo where it could be corporate meeting space, maybe a smaller wedding. Uh, but that is, uh, you know, what we had in mind, and that's what we heard, I think, uh, you know, coming from the steering committee as well. With that, uh, we, we talked about expanding and revamping the parking in that area to get, I think we were upwards of fifteen to twenty additional parking spaces that we could get on, on that side of, of the park. Uh, and along that line, you with the expanded parking with the new police headquarters, that opened up opportunity on the west side of the park. Uh, that, you know, could use parking there for the public as opposed to, uh, the police vehicles that are there now. Uh, also on the west side is we looked at, you know, improving that entrance and relocating the, uh, the rose garden to that area. The roses are currently, uh, you know, kind of the western corner down here by the, the, uh, art center. And, you know, not as really, I guess, uh, I guess not the best place for them with, with having more shade. Uh, this would open up and have more sunlight for, for them as well. Uh, some screening we proposed on the west side, uh, from cars and, and late afternoon sun, uh, for the people in the amphitheater. And I think, uh, I know Rick went and talked about also the, uh, entrance ways into the park, you know, crossing the street crossings. Uh, we were talking and proposing a raised crosswalk. Uh, you know, not that it's gonna, you know, really impact emergency vehicles, I mean, you can still go over them. You know, from the design standpoint, if you can, uh, you know, design the, the approaches and the, and the length of it properly, it's not like a speed bump in a parking lot. It's, it's just a raised platform that really alerts motorists to, to the pedestrian crossing there at hand. But, um, I think I've covered, well, we have also identified a, a trail, and it shows, uh, using mainly existing walkway. And I think it comes down around the street and back around that we've identified as a half mile trail. That's something people want to know is, you know, how far they walked, and, you know, with signage, we're able to, to identify that and, and help people with their, uh, exercise activities. So as, as we, you know, this is really the, the master plan that we have presented on, on presentation board. Uh, what we are still working on is, is the formal booklet itself, uh, which would have, uh, a combination of all the meeting minutes and, and some of the background history that we've, we've accumulated through this time period, as well as cost est, cost estimates, I'm sorry. And, uh, so I know that was one thing questioned during Monday night's work session, and I'd certainly be glad to come back with you at a future meeting, work session, or council meeting, either one, and, and kind of look at that. But that's, I know, uh, you know, it's one thing you're obviously interested. Everybody wants to know how much it costs. And, uh, I think at that point, you know, we can, uh, you know, present this and go over with Rick and his department, and, and they can make ideas and, and decisions as to what's, you know, priority, and what's, what's easier to do and, and take off the list, and what, what are the bigger picture items, and, and plan for those in the future. So that's pretty much it. If you've got any questions, be glad to, to answer anything specific, and, uh...
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or discussion? All vote. Thank you, sir.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Uh, seven E, debris removal. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and council members, I'm requesting that you authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into contracts on an emergency basis with DRC Emergency Services and Thompson Consulting Services with respect to the removal of debris and/or tracking and monitoring for reimbursement claims to FEMA and/or FEMA. If appropriate, utilizing bids or contracts approved by other Tennessee governmental entities, and this is relative to the debris, uh, in our storm damaged area.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda portion. We have time at the end for citizens that would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone? All right, council members, yes?
Um, I'd like to thank everyone in the city and, uh, and all the departments that have done the ten and twelve and fourteen hour workdays the last several days to help resuscitate this area that has been so devastated. I'd also like to, uh, commend the Cookeville Regional Hospital, who did, um, uh, an excellent, in taking, excellent, uh, plans for taking care of eighty-eight people who were injured by utilizing their, uh, emergency plan, uh, their Code Yellow Plan. And they had, uh, called out to all the physicians, and all that were called came in, and had more nurses there, and they were able to take care of these eighty-eight people. Some were transferred to other tertiary, um, medical facilities, and some were operated in Cookeville. But, uh, it was, it just, it worked very well. They canceled all the elective cases at the hospital and did a Yelman's job of taking care of the people in this community. And so I think we're all coming together, and the, the city has worked, the county has worked, and people from the state have worked to, and people from the surrounding communities have worked to help the poor people that have suffered this tragedy. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet so we can get back at it. We've got a lot of work to do, but I just want everybody to know that, um, the City of Cookeville is still open, and, um, we're, we're here for you, so.
I mean, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's been out there working. We've seen it. Um, it's amazing what the city's doing. You know, we've experienced a tragedy, but it is definitely not stopping us, and I've seen some amazing things come from the city. Not being from here, it's even more inspirational, so I just want to say thank you to everybody.
You know, it's, it's truly amazing what, what I'm seeing out there, 'cause, and, and it's, there's grassroots efforts, there's city, county, uh, federal government, state government, um, utility districts. It, it's, it's truly amazing how many different people come together, and I, I just want to share one real quick, couple stories, and that's, it's just a matter of like, you know, I've heard many people from out of state say, after seeing what they see on the ground there, who've come in from out of state, this is the kind of place they want to live, and that, that kind of, that's the best thing I've heard in the last two days. And it, it just, it's, it's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate everybody who's, who's working at it. Thank you.
Um, I apologize for being late. We were having our, um, final briefing, uh, probably will be one tomorrow afternoon. But, um, you know, uh, beginning Tuesday at two AM, uh, this was the most destructive and devastating day in, in Cookeville history. Um, eighteen of our citizens lost their lives, thirteen adults and five children. Uh, I know Jessica here, and, um, I had other friends as well, and I'm sure many of you did too. Um, it was a, a very trying time, uh, to work through that, and, um, the, the outpouring of support has been amazing for our community. Uh, it started immediately and has gone nonstop and has increased multi-folds. The, uh, there were so many showed up yesterday, over almost twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred and sixty-six actually, uh, showed up, uh, to volunteer that, to the point that we actually had to, um, stop, uh, and not have that today. And there won't be volunteers there tomorrow either. Uh, the power companies needed to finish their line work, and, uh, Twin Lakes had stuff to do, and, and other, other issues, uh, like that, and just trying to, to finalize that. There, the count did not change today, so, uh, all are accounted for now. That up, that went up and down a couple of times today, from one to three to two to zero, and there was no, uh, more loss of life, thankfully. Um, we continue to have, uh, multiple ways that people can help. Uh, if you've sent messages to mine or Mayor Porter's, uh, emails or social sites, and you haven't had a response, we apologize. I was receiving about twenty-two a minute, and he was about the same, uh, over about the last forty-eight hours. And so there's hundreds, uh, maybe over thousands that haven't been, and we try to work through those as we can. Uh, there's, there's, uh, spreadsheets that have been formed, and, uh, if you email in at all to, um, helpnow@putnamcountytn.gov, those are all, um, calculated and, and categorized, uh, so that they can be contacted, whether that's donating food or services, uh, coming to cook, uh, whatever that is. And so we continue to, to ask people to do that. Uh, six four six info, six four six four six three six is still active and, and being monitored if you have questions. Um, they're still doing, uh, the, the Cookeville Community Center is the, uh, uh, distribution point for all, uh, goods for the people that have been affected. Uh, Jefferson Avenue Church Cross also has, um, their disaster relief organization here. Samaritan's Purse has arrived. Convoy of Hope is arriving tomorrow. Just on and on and on. You know, the need, it, this isn't just a today or tomorrow or weekend. This is gonna be multi weeks and months that it will take. And, uh, most likely, the, the, going forward, the volunteer situation will be done with armbands. Uh, we'll be getting information out, that, out to you about that. Just so that it can be registered and tracked and, and make sure that the people who are supposed to be there are there and doing what they're supposed to do. A lot of, unfortunately, contractors, um, uh, there have been people that have come in and, and trying to take advantage of the area in some, uh, building things from out of town and state. And, uh, so that's going to be stopped. Um, and so we want to make sure, they're, they're coming back to do, uh, the assessment of the, um, of the damage number amount. That will be happening over the next day or two with drones and other things. Um, I was trying to update on everything that we covered. Uh, the donation site, that has been established. Um, it is through the, um, Cookeville Putnam County, uh, Tornado Relief Fund. It's through, the best way to access it is putnamcountytn.gov. That takes you to, uh, a site that is very, very good, that was done, uh, locally, and it has, uh, some great backend support from the same organization that helped Gatlinburg through their, uh, raise money for their fires, and, um, we're very thankful for that. You can also donate through, uh, we have PayPal set up, we have Venmo set up. You can text COOKFILLHELP to four one, uh, four one four four four. That also goes through the Putnam County site, and then any of the nineteen locations of Bank of Putnam County. There's been about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars donated so far, uh, in less than twenty-four hours. Uh, and so we, we know, and we've been contacted by many, many organizations, uh, corporate citizens that want to make significant contributions to our community. And we're committed to this money one hundred percent, going back to the victims. One hundred percent, every penny will go back to the people that were affected. And so that's why it's important to, uh, we... And so, that's why it's important to, uh, we, that we wanted to establish a, an official place to do this, not that there's anything wrong with people's GoFundMes, you can certainly donate wherever you want to. Uh, again, sadly, uh, there was, after the Venmo account was established, there was two fake Venmo accounts that used our, uh, uh, picture and similar wording and trying to trick people into donate to that. So, there's always people that will try to take advantage of a bad situation. But, a- at the end of this, I, I want to leave everyone, and my thoughts after, uh, being in the emergency operations center for the last, uh, two and a half days, uh, we are a very, very, very blessed community with amazing, uh, responders, and that includes linemen, and hospital, and police, and fire, and THP, and amazing community of volunteers. And so I would just continue to ask people to pray. Pray for the families that are going to be burying loved ones over the next week, and pray for, uh, the responders that saw things and had to do things at two-ten in the morning after the storm hit that you shouldn't have to do, and, and try to help, and to pray for our, uh, the healing of our community. And we're on our way to that, and I know we are, and we, we're resilient, and we'll rebound, and, um, I just appreciate everyone who has, has reached out and continued, will continue to reach out and, and, uh, make our community strong again, so.
Mayor, if I could, uh, the funeral arrangements have been finalized for Jessica. Visitation will take place from three to eight PM on Saturday, March seventh, at Cookeville, First Coming Presbyterian Church, Presbyterian Church. And on Sunday, March eighth, we'll have visitation at the church from one-thirty to three, and the service will take place at three PM.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, meetings adjourned.